I don't think so.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 8th, 2025 General Committee Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
In your name.
Ms. Diesart, will you lead us in a pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Foche.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Creason is not with us. Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Long is not here. Ms. Diesart.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you. Our first item is an education committee. Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Dr. Lemoine. Item 2.1 is long-range strategic plan, and we have Ms. Lametta.
Hi, good evening.
How are you, Ms. Lametta?
Doing well. How y'all doing? Enjoying your summer?
Yes.
It's going by super fast. For me. Summer school ended, and now we're in Data Fest Monday, so I don't even know what happened to the summer. Tonight, I'm going to give you a quick update on our strategic plan, and as you know, it's a five-year plan, so just to sort of refocus everyone, the front page that you have is our cover page, strategic plan, and what we have on the left side is the vision and mission, our core beliefs. Then down the right-hand side, we have basically, you know, our four big goals, the first one being teaching and learning, the next one, certified and effective employees, and the third, responsible finances to enhance teaching and learning and have a safe and secure environment, and then goal forward imaging. And as you know, with each one, we have objectives, and then the thick handout you have is the action plan, which we plan to use to reach those objectives. And this is the last year of this five-year strategic plan. So, we don't have a lot of changes in the plan. We really have a big focus in the teaching and learning section on the new accountability system. So, you'll see that I reworded the objectives in goal one to meet the new accountability system, and just not to get too much in the weeds, but in the old system, students got points for each achievement level. They scored 150 for advanced, 100 for mastery, 80 for basic, and zero for approaching and unsat. In the new system, there'll be no scores given. They'll just look at if a student scored mastery above or not. You'll be a yes or a no. So, I changed the wording of those objectives to reflect that. Also, schools used to have an assessment index that was calculated from those scores, so they won't have that. They'll just look at what percentage of students scored mastery in English, math, science, and social studies. Then they'll look at the percentage of students actually who grew in English and math, and then the percentage of students who grew in your lowest 25 percent, and they'll look at your ELPT scores. And the growth is different from the last system. The old system, growth was considered one of two ways. They wanted students to get to mastery by eighth grade or by 10th grade, so they would look at how far you were from eighth or 10th, subtract and get the number of years you had to get to mastery, and then they'd give you, divide your distance from mastery by how many years you had to get to it, and that would be your growth score. They'd look at each student and say, did you read that, reach that growth score or not? That was step one. If you didn't, when all the scores came in, you could still make your growth by step two. Step two, and this system is being used right now for the scores for the school year. Step two is they take students with similar conditions, meaning if you have attendance issue, if you maybe have some discipline issues, or maybe have a disability, they group students who are alike together, look at their scores, and then they rank them in percentile ranking. And then they look at each chunk of the percentile rank, and you get points based on where you fall in the percentile ranking. So, with that system, the students would have, the school would have a growth index. The new system, there's no growth index. Each achievement band, advanced, mastery, basic, approaching, and unsat is divided into two parts, and whichever part you fall into, your growth is to reach the halfway point of the next band. So, if you're at the high level of basic, you'd have to reach the lower end of mastery to reach the goal. So, it's no longer a point score. It's just, did you make it to the next half level or not? So, that's the difference in the word. There's no longer a growth score or assessment index. It's just, oh, you mastery above or not, and did you reach that next half a band or not? So, it's a little simpler. So, I just reworded the objectives in section one of goal one to reflect those changes. Goal two, with the effective and certified employees, the only thing I highlight is in that section, you'll see, we have a TSB coordinator, as you know, last school year, Erin Larson got the job of TSB coordinator. And although Ms. Albers does an amazing job trying to find certified teachers, they just don't exist in the numbers they used to. So, every school system across the state now, or many, have their own teacher certification program. I know we were the first one, I believe, to get it. Most people need it now. So, we highlighted that in that second section because that's our way to get certified teachers to grow our own. So, Ms. Larson does a good job trying to get people in the system. Once they get in, get their mentoring, their support, and Erin Larson.
Erin Larson.
Yep, Erin Larson. So, she does a good job spearheading that support for the teachers because that's a big focus for us, is once we get some people who are good employees and want to work with students, keep them on and help them become good teachers. The only other new piece on section three we have, which is page 30, objective 3.2, I just draw your attention to that page. If you look on the bottom of page 30, it's subjective 3.2 in yellow. I'm going to wait for y'all to get to it. I'm just using my teacher wait time. Because I do have a small presentation for Ms. Lichardi on this bullet, so I just wanted to draw this attention to you. So, on page 30, the last item highlighted in yellow, "The district is going to implement an Evolve weapons detection system at entrances of Chelmsford High School for the coming school year." And it is weapons detection. It's not a metal detector, so it won't trigger on buttons and zippers and things like that. It's weapons detection. If you've been to Disney World or Dollywood recently, or many stadiums, or even college stadiums have it, many people can walk through at once, and it doesn't go off if you have zippers or buttons. It specifically looks for the metal or the shape of weapons, and the software is updated on a regular basis to keep, I would say, to keep up with any newly evolved weapons, right? And that's why they name it Evolve. The software you have on a monthly basis, they're constantly evolving with what comes out as weapons. And I don't want to steal any of her thunder, but I do have Ms. Lichardi here, who her first line of her statement is going to be, Ms. Lametta gave you a few, little overview, and she didn't know how little it was going to be because you know how I like to talk. So, I'm going to not do a big overview and let her step in.
All right. Good afternoon. I know Ms. Lametta shared a little bit of information already, but I'm really excited about this, and it's going to be happening at Chelmsford High. So, for the upcoming school year, we've secured a weapons detection system. It's called Evolve. This is a major step forward in our commitment and continued efforts to ensure the safety of our students and faculty while still allowing for a smooth and fast entry onto the campus. Now, to be clear, it's not a traditional metal detector, okay? It's designed specifically to detect weapons of mass casualty and components of the weapons. It doesn't go off for phones, keys, loose change, belts, anything like that. Students are able to walk through with their backpacks on. Multiple people can enter at the same time, so it won't slow things down. This is how it works, okay? A student walks through the system, and a staff member is standing there monitoring the system on a tablet. If something potentially dangerous is detected, an alert will sound, and that person will show up on the screen with an orange box around the area of concern. That individual is then directed discreetly to a secondary scanning person who also has an iPad or a tablet that shows the same picture of the same person with the targeted area on it, okay? So, it's going to give them to where to target their search. So, the system is very smart and uses artificial intelligence, and it detects composition and irregularities. For example, if one person has a firearm and the other person has the bullets, so ammunition, even if they split up the parts of the gun or the parts of it, and they put them in different bags, it's still going to flag both individuals, but not the other individual that's walking on the side of them, okay? Just like this picture. So, this is a police officer walking with me. I'm walking in, and I don't know if we can get it back.
Yes, let me go.
I'm walking in, nothing happens to me, but it targets where he's got his weapon, and it tells him, hey, look, in this area. So, they know when they get the secondary search, oh, it's in the school bag, or, oh, it's here, and then we could use the ones as normal, okay? We piloted this last year at a football game, and as you'll see, it went really well. The people responded well to it. The community loved it, and administrators thought it was great, and we have a little short video of what that looked like as they There's no slowing down. There's nothing. They can just walk through with their regular. All right. So, we are excited to bring this innovation to Chelmsford High, and we believe it's a smart, effective way to enhance school safety while maintaining a welcoming environment for our students, too. We're going to let the parents know in a mail-out and notify them in a mail-out before school starts that we'll be doing this.
Excellent.
All right. Any questions?
Tell them that we're going to hand it.
Mr. Rodriguez, you have a question?
Yeah. Would it be with weapons, is that, would it also, like a knife?
So, it all depends on the settings that it's set on, and the intensity of it, and the size. I mean, when we did at Chelmsford High, it went off on knives. It went off on tools. A man came in with his work bag, and it went off on pliers that he still had on him. So, it'll pick up all those things, but it's not meant to pick up cell phones and keys and notebooks and things like that. So, that's why the kids can just walk in with their school bags and keep going. But, like, it will pick up, like, if you have an inhaler, it might pick up on that. But, it's AI, so it's going to get smarter. The more we use it, the smarter it's going to get and start picking up on that. So, we do have some glitches. We're going to, logistics, we're going to have to work out, I'm sure, but this seems like the best thing that we can do right now to enhance safety. And Ms. Lametta is asking me to say where we're getting at. We'll have four units at Chelmsford High, the back entrance where the kids come in in the morning, and where the football games are. That'll be that. It's a two one, and it stays outside. So, more than one person can walk through a single one, so when we have a double, we can, like, five kids can be walking in a straight line through together. Then we'll have one at the front office entrance on the main campus. We'll have one in the main campus gym lobby, and we'll have one on the freshman side front entrance where the kids get off the bus and everybody comes in in the morning, and the parents go in. Anything else?
Well, that's great. That's a great, you know, something new for this year coming. Last year, we had the MyRide with the app on the buses, so great job. Great job. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So, ahead.
Now, I just wanted, I just wanted to comment that, you know, we had interviewed and surveyed and talked with a lot of parents and such, and you had split over metal detectors. You had kind of split opinions on that. So, this is not a metal detector. So, it's not going to be, take your backpacks off, scan the backpacks, because right now, at the middle and the high school, we're doing those random search, every seventh kid today or every fifth kid tomorrow, and it gets very cumbersome. This is used at big venues like amusement parks and football games. So, we did pilot it last year, and we felt that this is going to be something, that this is something that both parents are going to be accepting of, and kids, half the time, won't even notice because they're just walking through it, and they're not removing anything. They're not changing their pace. They're just walking into school. So, it's something that we can monitor for the, for actual weapons and not for minor things, like they're going to go off, you know, with keys and belts and different things that are going to slow down. So, I think this is really going to be something good that will satisfy all stakeholders involved in this.
Mrs. Diesart, you had a question?
Thank you for, thank you for that presentation. I had a question on the, the second part of the, you know, process. If, if they do go off, you know, buzz off, and they go to the second stage of the winding, then what's going to evolve after that? Like, if?
Well, it would all depend on, it would all depend on what they have on them. If they go through and they see that that big red box is on their school bag, and they go through the school bag and they see, oh, it's an eyeglass case, then they can go back through without the eyeglass case and, and walk through, and okay, everything's fine. If it is a weapon, we would treat it like we would handle any weapon that we find any other day.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And it's not just for kids, too. It's any adult who walks in the building.
Anybody that's coming in. Yeah, so it's going to be at the front office, both sides. So, any parent that comes in, anybody.
Dr. Lemoine.
Great. Sounds like a good, good system. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My question was related to training for any of the Chelmsford High staff that are on duty in the morning, because I knew this will be something new. So, is there a plan for that when the teachers return?
Yes. So, we actually have them coming in at the end of the month to do a training with the administrators, and it is very easy to use. In that video, you'll see one of my daughters working the iPad that's standing there, and she'd just say, hey, can you go over there? And it'd say, okay. I mean, it's very easy because the interface, it's a video, and it shows the person's face, and it shows where it's at. So, it's really easy to use, but there are different settings, and it does data collection. So, it can say, hey, look, it went off 473 times this school year. What were the things, what were the items? And when it does go off, you can put in there, oh, it was an iPad case. It was this, or whatever triggered that alert, so that way it collects that good data, so when it updates, and we can have all that. But, they do it. They're coming out, I think, on the 28th.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez.
A notice is just for Chelmsford High School for this year. Would that be something that could be expanded to other schools, or we're just worried about Chelmsford?
They're looking at me. No, we're starting here. [laughing] No, actually, we're starting here. We feel that's going to be the best use. As that works well, and everybody's comfortable with it, we may look then to
Could be possible.
Our middle schools. Absolutely, it could be possible.
Thank you so much.
I just have one question. So, the foot traffic coming in on buses is directed through, any walkers that are coming in is directed to, you know, there's only a few entrances you can get in, and they all have to go through this in order to get access to school?
Chelmsford High has a single-point access in the morning to take in, so it's going to be that one access.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Will we continue on with the strategic plan, or are you?
Now, we're just going to just remind you all that we meet in Data Fest next week with administrators, supervisors, and their school teams. They're going to review it as well, and then I'll come back to y'all next meeting, and we're going to get any input from them at that meeting as well. This is just part of our yearly review process.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on strategic plan? Mrs. Diesart.
Yes. Ms. Lichardi, one more question on this Evolve. So, I notice in the morning, you know, the intake, the bus, the school buses. If this seems to slow the students getting off the school buses, there's a possibility we could add another one, right?
Yes.
If need be, if timing would require.
Yes, if timing would require. I'm thinking the first week or so, we're probably going to run into a few little glitches, but I think, once the kids get the hang of it, I don't think we're going to have any real issues. I mean, there's a very big business that uses it in Florida, and they have a whole lot more people coming in than Chelmsford High does, and they use that system, and they just flood in. So, I'm thinking that we're going to, once we work out the glitches and the kinks, we're going to be okay. But, yes, there is definitely an option that we can get a whole other system.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. You finished? Okay. We're done with the strategic plan, and we'll give it back to Mrs. Lemoine for personnel items.
Thank you.
Dr. Lemoine.
Well, I think at this point, we'll just let it go through to the regular school board meeting. If y'all want to look at it a little bit more, we're going to go over it again. Any changes with the school administrators and coordinators and principals and central office people next week during Data Fest, then come back to y'all on the 22nd for the final approval. Okay?
Mr. Send it to the full board.
Yeah, maybe you make a motion, send it to the full board.
I'll make a motion that we send the strategic plan for this year's strategic plan to the full board with no recommendation to be discussed. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Diesart, a second by Dr. Lemoine. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Agenda item number 3.1 are personnel changes for July 2025, and we have Ms. Albers with us.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. In your folders, you'll see personnel changes for, since our last board meeting, and you'll note that there is an item at the bottom of that minutes for you guys to take a look at.
Okay.
It is a leave without pay, and it will require a board approval for one of our employees.
Okay. Ms. Harris?
Is that what we need to decide in executive session?
Um, no. No. It's, employees can request a leave without pay for a period of time, and we can just automatically grant that. We, there is no pay involved. They can still maintain their place if they come back at the end of the leave without pay, and during the course of that time, they can maintain their insurance with us if they pay both parts to the insurance. So, there's, you know, everyone has different reasons. Reasons. It may be a family member who is ill that they have to take care of, or it's a personal situation. And when they're on a leave without pay, they cannot, and they sign off on it, they cannot go to work anywhere else and earn money. It's for a situation that they need to take care of on a personal level, but they cannot take it to go work somewhere else, and they do sign off on that. Contractually, once we would grant a leave without pay, no employee can then request another one for another seven-year period. So, it's something that we do. It does require board action to grant it, and we usually do so. Ms. Albers has talked with the employee, feels that the reason is, is mine, and it is personal reasons and family-related.
So, I'm not necessarily asking about this particular individual, but when it's at the MLA, it's not, we don't have to vote on it, right?
Correct. The ones that, we don't have to vote on that. This is a true, just leave without pay. It's just, they're off doing something else, not getting paid by us, but at the end of the time, we do guarantee they can come back and work for us without going through a reentry process. And since this is a bus driver, we really would like her to come back and work for us.
Okay. At this time, I want to attain a motion for the leave without pay.
I also move that we grant the leave without pay at this time for the bus driver.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Diesart, seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, Ms. Lemoine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nine-zero. Mr. Rodriguez, nine-zero.
I know. Timing is all in it.
Yes, yes.
Kimberly Smith, is this the one that just makes Teacher of the Year?
No, this Kimberly Smith is a power. She was a power at one of our other schools, and she is transferred over to a different site for this upcoming school year. But, there is another Kimberly Smith.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Albers. Okay. Agenda item number four is an insurance committee item. Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah, we have consideration of results for BID tapulation for 2025-26 student athletic insurance. Mr. Fernandez.
Okay. In your packets is our recommendation for student insurance, student athletic insurance for next fiscal year. It's with Risk Services of Louisiana. It's the same insurer that we currently have our athletic insurance with. They're offering the same coverage at the same rate, so we are recommending that we just renewed a policy with that company. And as a reminder, this policy covers all of our athletes. It also covers all of us students on all field trips and extracurricular activities, and it gives them all schooltime coverage as well. So, we, it's a good deal. Price isn't going up, same coverage, so we recommend a renewal.
Any questions for Mr. Fernandez? Dr. Lemoine?
Not a question, but just, well, wanted to make a motion that we send this recommendation to the full board.
Second.
Well, let's vote. Thank y'all so much.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Agenda item number five is executive committee. Mrs. Diesart.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Next item is to adopt the 2024-25 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire.
Okay. In your packets, it's the compliance questionnaire. This, we, the board must adopt this every year in conjunction with our audit, our independent audit. It's basically just a questionnaire with, that we fill out that attests that we comply with all applicable state laws regarding budgeting, public meetings, asset management, and accounting, and things of that nature, purchasing. So, we just need the board to adopt this before our auditors come in to begin their financial audit, financial and compliance audit.
And when would that be, Mr. Fernandez?
They will be coming in in September.
In September.
So, but they will be, start doing preliminary work now and in the month of August, but they'll be onsite in September.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we adopt the 2024-2025 Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any discussion? Are there any other questions?
I do have one question. On the second page, the material compliance is exceeding, and it was originally 30,000, and then it's changed to 60,000.
Correct.
Different than that.
The law changed. The legislature changed the law to increase limits on those purchases from 30. It was previously 30,000. Now, it's changed to 60,000. So, the legislature ought to really, I guess, hasn't updated their form yet, but they just scratched out and put in 60,000. But, the current limit is $60,000.
Okay. Were there any other questions at this time or discussion? Okay, there being none. There is a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. Ms. Lemoine?
Thank you, Ms. Diesart. Agenda item number 6.1 is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the St. Bernard Parish School Board versus the Board of Commissioners of the Port of New Orleans, 34th JDC, number 24-0892/ D. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Ms. Lemoine, I'm wondering if possibly we should do the superintendent's notes prior to go into executive session. That way, the public
We certainly can.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I move that we move item number seven up before item six, and address superintendent's notes at this time.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Okay. Superintendent's notes.
I just want to announce, at the July 26th meeting, I'm just going to read this off. This is an announcement of a public meeting. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025, at 6:00 PM, at the St. Bernard Parish School Board Office, 200 East St. Bernard Highway, Chelmsford, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in school district number one of the Parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal of an ad valorem tax therein. Now, what, what this means is, this is the year, this coming year, our 10-year millage to take care of all of our buildings, the repair and maintenance of all of our school buildings, will be coming up for renewal. This is not a new tax. It is a renewal of an existing millage to take care of our school buildings. At the meeting on the 22nd, our bond attorney, Grant Sluter, will be here, at which point he will have a resolution that the board will have to consider passing to call that special election to be held in November. So, we just wanted to make the public aware that the meeting will be held, and any public input, obviously, will be appreciated at that meeting when the board will consider calling a special election for the calling a special election for the renewal of this particular millage.
It's not an increase, it's a renewal, the millage is remaining the same.
Yes.
New tax.
And I think, you know, I'm hoping the public will see that our buildings are well-maintained. You know, we've had, it's been twenty years since Hurricane Katrina, every one of our buildings has been built new, or totally renovated, they're clean, they've been maintained effectively, and this particular millage is the money that is set aside to make sure that we do not have to pull funds from our general fund and impact education, that this money is set aside just to maintain the buildings each year. Okay? And then along, unless somebody has any questions, I'll just quickly finish that, so we can go back to the other. And I just wanted to, um, make sure that the play, The Newsies, is this week at Chelmsford High Cultural Arts Center, it's Thursday, starts on Thursday, the 10th, so the 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. Uh, the performances will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday afternoon and Sunday afternoon at 2:00. Think it'd be very, it's a very enjoyable evening, I know it's gonna be great, it's double cast, if you want to go twice and see two different sets of kids performing, it would be, it's just a wonderful experience. And as Ms. Lumetta has mentioned, next week, beginning on the 14th, it's the week of what we call Data Fest, when all of our school administrators, our principals, assistant principals, supervisors, and we also bring in our teacher leaders and instructional coaches, will all be in the training center at Chelmsford High School for the week to talk about our school improvement plans and get set for the upcoming school year. Our new teacher orientation, I mean, things are getting, moving very quickly, our new teacher orientation will be the week beginning July 28th, and they'll be here with us that full week, and all teachers will report that following Monday on August 4th, support people on the 6th, and believe it or not, on Friday, August 8th, the first day of school for all of our students. So these things, you know, that clock keeps moving and moving and moving, and people think sometimes, um, summer is a time of rest, well, we just got finished massive summer school and summer programs, and we're going into a very, we hope, productive training cycle with all of our teachers, administrators, and policymakers, and hopefully getting really ready for an upcoming and great new school year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Vouchet, and again, we want to thank all of the teachers and the staff members that have worked diligently over the summer, the summer programs, and that will be taking part next week in Data Fest, and thank you, Ms. Lumetta, for your leadership with that, um, events as well.
Ms. Lamoy?
Yes.
Ms. Vouchet, the date of the big assembly at the Civic Center, when all the teachers and support personnel...
Thursday, August 7th.
August 7th, at 8:30?
Right, at 8:30 in the morning, get there early, get a good parking place, and get seated, and get ready to go. It's always... We'll begin at 8:30 on Thursday, August 7th, at the Civic Center.
It's always a great day to see all the teachers and support personnel together, and they all seem like they're ready to go and starting a new school year, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dyson, and thank you, Ms. Vouchet. So at this time, we will return to agenda item number six, um, and I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Dyson. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
We will now go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion that we go back into open session at this time?
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Dyson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Harris, all in favor, please, um, cast your votes.
Motion passes eight zero.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Harris, seconded by Ms. Dyson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, and good night.